Good evening to everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. I would invite you at this time to stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We are starting our meeting tonight with a PowerPoint by Mr. Knapp from Finance Department.
Well, good evening. Tonight, we're at our, the final step of approving our 2013-14 budget. At our last meeting, we, you gave us a permission to publish the notice of the hearing. The total budget authority for that was 419 million. We had an estimated mill levy of 55.555, which was a .211 decrease from last year's mill levy. And tonight, we're going to go through operating funds and some capital outlay, just to highlight a couple of those areas. Those documents have been posted to the board docs and they're also on our website. And there's a few hard copies back there on the table. There are about four documents. There's a state book, budget at a glance, budget profile, and then our own internal book. We're going to start off with the supportive funds. This kind of just recaps all the different funds that we call our supportive funds or our operating funds. This is where we pay our teachers, we pay our supplies and services, and our utilities, and our benefits. We're anticipating our budget expenditures for 2013-14 to be 214.5 million, based on revenues of 216.5 million. So you do the math real quick. We're going to surplus about $2 million for 2013-14 is what we're anticipating. Any questions on those? Our next group that we like to call is the self-supported funds. And that, and they're self-supported because they generate fees and local taxes support that operations. We do not transfer any money to these funds from the general fund or the supplemental general fund. Some of the common ones that we've talked about in the past, of course, is the food service operation, summer school program. You have your textbook rentals in there, the buyer textbook adoptions. We have about 20.5 million total budget in self-supported, with the majority of that being food service at 13.4 million. A third group that we have, we call our flow-throughs. That means that we receive the local, we leave it, excuse me, we receive the taxes locally, and we remit them back to the state, and then we get the funding through the formula. Those would be the declining enrollment and the cost of living. And then the other is the capers. That's the money that the state sends us, and they take it back the same day. So, total budget of 28.8 million. Another group is our federal funds. Total budget is about 11.3 million, and that will include our Title I, is a large one, and then our Title VI for special ed is 5.8 million. Okay? And then our last group is capital and debt retirement. The capital outlay is 13.6 million, which we've talked about, and we'll talk about a little bit later in the evening. And then also bond and interest, which retires our bond and principles, and our special assessment, which we mainly pay our Johnson County wastewater through. Okay? Total budget is about 59.5 million for that. So if you look at all the total, I should have put a total on that, but the total is about, this is about 334 million. And your publication was 419, and the difference is the transfers, the transfers that we come out of the general fund and the supplemental to all the supportive funds. And so we have roughly about $85 million in transfer. But our budget authority is 419 million. Any questions on those three, those group of funds before we move on? Okay. You're familiar with this. This is our summary of fund balance. We've shown this to you many times in the past. This is our operating funds. And before we get to 2013-14, we wrapped up our fiscal year June 30th for 2013, and we deficit spend two point, or 2,166,000, leaving an ending balance of 9 million in our operating funds, leaving the contingency reserve intact at 5.6 million. Okay? So our anticipated budget for our operating funds in 2013-14, we're looking at revenues of 216.5 million, and that's based on the base date per pupil remaining the same at 3,838. No miracles happened between June and now, so we're still at 3838. Expenditures, very few changes since our last workshop in June. Total budget is 214.5 million. I would mention that in both these numbers, there's 2.7 million in student growth reserve. You know how we put 500 kids in just in case we have an enrollment growth, which we hope we do? Then we're able to capture the LOB on that amount if we do get that. So the 2.7 is in both places, so it nets out to zero, so it has no, no effect on the bottom line. Okay? The anticipated ending fund balance will be temp, or right about 11 million, actually, and then it'll leave the contingency reserve intact at 5.6 million. Any questions on the operating expenditures?
It's noted that in 2013-14, the 1.9 million dollars of surplus that's noted there on line four does not include any compensation adjustments or benefits increases. That is the same salary figures that were, ended in 2013, so there's been no salary adjustments and/or benefit adjustments in this current 2013-14 budget. And so if that does occur, we'll be bringing back a revised budget for the board sometime in the future.
It does include professional growth, though, the column.
Okay.
The, the next largest fund we're going to talk about is the capital outlay. We are showing a little bit of assessed valuation increase at 1%. That's still a preliminary number. It does not get finalized in Kansas until October, November timeframe, and so that is true for our mill levies as well. But the, so we have a little bit of 1% increase on assessed valuation. We're doing the eight mills maximum we can do, and we anticipate about 38.6 million dollars available budget for this year's for all our projects, which leaves us expenditures about 33.6, and leaving an ending balance of about $5 million. In that 33.6, that's mainly just equipment items and technology items, and then just the regular cycle projects that O&M does every year. That does leave an unallocated balance of about 16.5 million. And we currently are looking at a plan to set some standards for security entrances and some additional standards. Once those plans are finalized, then I believe Bob will work on projects that will, the timeline would be to start them in the summertime of 2014. They're looking at five elementary buildings and horizons to do those entryways.
Quick question on, one, two, three, the fifth line down, district operations. Could you explain what those are, please?
Go back one slide.
Capital outlay expenditures. What'd you say?
Back on this slide here.
Capital outlay expenditures.
Capital outlay expenditures.
District operations, correct. The 13.931. Is that, if you could explain that, what's, what does that line represent?
That's mainly the cycle projects that O&M.
The district operations is?
Yes.
All right.
And some, our technology pool.
Okay, that's what you said.
About $2 million worth of technology items each year.
Okay, thanks.
The majority of that is for operations and maintenance, though, where they do the cycle roofing programs, the cycle plumbing programs, the cycle maintenance programs.
Okay.
And I believe we have approximately eight or nine million, seven or eight or nine mil, seven or eight million allocated just for operations and maintenance to do those cycle projects. Then on top of that is equipment replacement for, for the cycle equipment, both for our trucks and fleet, and some of the other equipment that operations and maintenance routinely replaces, like buffers and lawn mowers and that kind of thing. And so that's the, that's the majority of that, 13.9 million dollars.
Thank you. I had one question, too, on the capital outlay revenue slide there. The sale of buildings, you know, last meeting, we approved the sale of Dorothy Moody. I assume we're waiting until all of that grace period is over before that's shown on this, so.
Yeah, that, that money will be deposited into the capital outlay fund.
Right.
When we close.
Very good.
Yes.
I just wanted to make point of that, since we know that there was another sale of a building, so.
Yeah, you see, you see the sale of Mission Valley bond here, Somerset, right? And a small piece of land we sold at Ray Marsh in 1112. And we'll, we're waiting for the closing period, which is forty, forty, 30 days or 45 days from the contract date sign. And then once that, our revised budgets will show that income coming in.
Okay.
On the expenditure side, also, the $5 million, if you want to flip forward to us. The $5 million we keep in the balance, ending cash balance, is basically for our cash flow. We need some money to start the beginning of every year because we don't receive our tax revenues for the capital outlay fund until...
We see that our big chunks are in January and the first part of June.
Okay. And so we, we keep $5 million in there for our cash flow, to make sure there's enough cash flow in that account to, to...
That carries our expenditures for the whole, from July through December, until we get that next chunk in January.
So we, we don't like to, we don't, if we ran it down to zero, we'd come into a cash flow issue with, with some of the capital projects. So we try to keep a minimum of $5 million in there.
Any other questions about capital outlay?
As far as the projects for the secure entryways, their operations and maintenance now are reviewing those six sites, developing plans and concepts. What will happen then is that they'll come to cabinet for review as far as the conceptual design, schematic designs. And then hopefully, next month, we'll be soliciting architects and bringing those architectural contracts for your approval in, in the month of September. And so when, when we do that, we'll bring you the listing of schools. We'll probably group them in two or three groups of buildings per architect, and then give you some kind of idea of what kind of scope that we're looking at within each of the buildings. On some of these buildings, the secure entryways can be accommodated by just reallocating the space that's existing, like at Rose Hill. It's a big enough facility, has a big enough office area that that basically needs renovation. But in some buildings, there will have to be additions put onto the building, either to accommodate the taking away of a classroom in the front of the building, and an addition in the back, or adding an addition onto the front of the building for the secure entryway. And so the projects will vary in scope depending on which site is available, and that's what we're doing now, is an analysis of each of those sites to determine what's necessary to accommodate what we'll consider to be a district standard.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions on tonight's budget? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we will move on.
Do you want to invite any comment from the audience?
Is there anyone here that was going to speak to the budget tonight? Very good. All right, thank you. We'll move on to the report by the superintendent, Dr. Hinson.
Thank you this morning for the majority of our students in the school district. We started in a very soggy fashion. I think that's a fair statement, but a very smooth and quiet start this morning. And so as you know, we've kicked off the school year with most of our kids. The preliminary enrollment numbers I'm going to give you, and of course, they're going to fluctuate because some of the students haven't returned yet, and we'll really monitor those after Labor Day and then our September count date. But as of right now, we are up several hundred students where we were last year. The significant increase is at the elementary level. So again, we'll, we'll continue to monitor the information, but from where we were, from where we were last year at this time, we are up several hundred students in comparison. So stay tuned in that regard. But a very smooth, quiet start today. Kindergarteners will start this week. That's a very, very fun time for the majority of the kindergarteners and some of the parents in that regard. And so we look forward just to a really, really quiet week. So I'll keep you informed in regard to enrollment numbers. We have added some additional teachers already this week, and that's a great location for us, for us in the Shawnee Mission School District.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to open forum, Mrs. Wendering. We have no, no one to speak in open forum. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. That would be F1 on your agenda there. So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Mack.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bisfield. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries 7-0. Move on to F2.
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Denny. Thank you, Mrs. Bisfield, or Mrs. Goodburn, sorry.
No, Levens.
Oh, sorry, I came from over there. Thank you. Get me on the straight and narrow here. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you very much. Motion carries 7-0. Adoption of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn and Mrs. Neber. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right, we'll move on to the approval of routine business by consent. Is there any item that any board member would like to remove from this? Mrs. Neber.
I would move approval of routine business by consent.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Mack. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay, motion carries 7-0. That covered quite a bit of business there. Within that motion and approval, we had students' special education that was needed there, dealt dental for our employees, the HR agenda, workers comp. And we'll move all the way down to the action items, which begin at letter P. Dr. Hinson.
The first item tonight is an appeal of liquidated damages. Unfortunately, tonight, we have a few individuals that are facing life-altering situations. They're having to retire, resign from the school district, not of their choosing. We certainly wish them well. The first one tonight, I'm recommending that we accept the resignation without imposition of the $1,000 resignation penalty.
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Denny. Mrs. Bisfield, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much. Dr. Hinson.
Numeral II is in the same order, the recommendation tonight for this individual without imposition of the $1,000 resignation penalty.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Mack.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay, thank you. Dr. Hinson.
Numeral III, I do recommend tonight we approve the resignation, but with the imposition of the $1,000 penalty.
We've all had backup on this one as well. Is there a motion for this approval?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
On this one, we already have a person to cover the position, though. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
Okay.
So moved.
Well, I'll take Mrs. Mack on that one. Dr. Denny, you want to second that?
Sure.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-1. Dr. Hinson.
Numeral IV, also tonight, we have another resignation. I'd recommend without the imposition of the $1,000 penalty.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Neber.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Levens. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Motion carries 7-0. Dr. Hinson.
Numeral V is a little different. It's the approval of the update to our policy and procedures for drug and alcohol testing. Certainly nothing significant in that update, but we would be happy to answer any questions.
Have we seen this before? Or is this a first reading?
This is...
It's the first.
It's a procedure.
It's a procedure. It's only, it's not a policy, so there's, it's the first reading.
Right.
Did you have a question, Dr. Denny?
It struck me that this is a procedure focuses on just a certain segment of our employee base.
Anybody that qualifies, anybody that has a CDL license and falls under the Department of Transportation's rules and regulations have to abide by this policy and procedure as far as the random drug testing requirement and the giving the information at the, when they're hired, as far as their past driving record. And so with this, with this, we've had this procedure for 20 years, since 1990s. The direct, the change in this is that the Department of Labor is requiring us to go back to past employers to make sure that there's no blemishes on that employee's record that, in the last two years prior to their hiring by the school district. And we're, we're putting that into our language. That's the only change in the actual procedure that we're bringing forward. But it's, it's only for a handful of employees around the district that have that CDL requirement within their job description. We've had Kurt review this also with the Department of Labor flyer as far as what we need to do to get this, to get into compliance with their, with their regulation.
The Roman numeral III, which I presume is all new language?
It's red and crossed out, yes.
It starts, it starts post offer, pre-employment procedures?
Yeah. Amy, Amy worked on this also, so if Amy has any comments, it would be good if she saw that, or Kurt.
That language sort of suggests to me that it's, that that's when you ask the information, either at the time you make an offer, but before they start. Doesn't the DOT have a requirement for annual testing, random testing?
Yes, 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 I do.
Why, why it says post offer, pre-employment? It seems kind of...
I'm trying to catch up with you on the language, Craig. Where are you, where are you?
Oh, I think I'm on whatever.
Show me the answer to that.
Yeah, page nine, I think.
Grab the phone, microphone.
Page nine.
We do have, we do, we do do monthly random drug testing.
Yeah. The, the new rule, this hasn't been updated since '06, so I decided to make it a goal to look at it this year. And Department of Transportation has a new, a ruling that occurred that said, after we make the offer of employment, but prior to them doing any, what they call safety-sensitive tasks, which would be driving a large vehicle, we have to either, we have to both do the random drug test as well as ask for pre, like, employment, prior to our employment, for the two years prior, any driving record issues or any failed drug tests.
What happens when we have a current employee that's been with us, say, five years, and his job duties change, and he moves into a position where he needs to get a CDL? How do we treat that employee?
It's, it's the same, it's the same. When they're moving, we consider that still because we're offering them the job, so it's still a post offer, pre-employment.
Okay.
Any other questions? Well, we have Mrs. Dillon here. Dr. Dillon, pardon me.
This will, this will only come to the board one time for review, since it's a procedure. It won't come again. So once the board takes action tonight, we'll be doing the revisions and adopting that procedure as far as our daily operations as we go forward. So just, I just wanted to note that.
So is there, is there an issue with it saying policy and procedures? Is, if it's, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm being nitpicky about this. Should it just be procedures for drug and alcohol?
We can change it to procedures, but it's been our policy and procedure, but not a board policy.
Okay, that's it. Okay, that's the difference.
Has not been a board adopted policy.
That's fine.
Board adopted procedure.
Right.
Got it. Any other questions? Mrs. Levens?
I just had a couple of typo kinds of things. That's worth pointing out. And the, under item five, or three, five, the one, two, three, fourth line down toward the end, it says, employer does not have information about the return to duty. It's a due duty process.
To duty.
To duty. Should just be a T instead of a D on that line.
You got that, Amy?
An item, under three, the fifth item, the one, two, three, fourth line toward the end, return to duty process. And then there were, I have to see if I can figure out where this is. It says, the last paragraph, two, three, third, the last line, the district will not use the employee to perform safety-sensitive functions, and I'm thinking it should say the district will not allow the employee to perform safety-sensitive functions. That's minor, but...
We can make that change if you want. That's probably came from, straight out of the department labor.
Okay.
Probably came straight out of the...
We have better words. And I think it's in the fifth paragraph as well, the same wording. Let me just see if I can find it.
Sort of use employee, allow employee.
Allow employee, will not allow, you know, employee. Let me see. Yes. If you count under Roman numeral three as the first paragraph, one, two, three, four, five, two paragraphs below the numerals in the second line toward the end, the district will not allow the employee to perform.
Okay. We'll make, we'll make those revisions. I mean, we probably just took it straight out of the department labor group, answered it, so.
Okay. Very good. So with that change of language and clarification, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Mrs. Mack, Mrs. Neber. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries 7-0. And number six, Dr. Hinson.
Numeral six, we, I'm recommending we approve the resignation of this individual without imposition of the resignation penalty.
So moved. Second.
Is that Mrs. Bisfield? Okay, thank you. I wasn't looking up. Thank you, Mrs. Neber. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries 7-0. Okay, we'll move on to Q1. Dr. Hinson, do you want to field that, or?
We'll be happy to answer any, you know, additional questions you might have at all tonight, anything that you want to know.
Is there any other questions that anyone had? We've had that nicely some, summary PowerPoint earlier. Dr. Denny?
I move we adopt the budget.
Okay. Second. I'd just like to point out that we had other budget hearings earlier this year where we were allowed to ask questions, and we did. So just wanted to point that out before we voted. Thank you.
I also just wanted to mention that I think it would help people if they knew they really can find all of this information on our website or under board docs, because I think frequently, just hearing this part, they don't have any idea how much. And there's some very easy-to-read ones and some that go into total in-depth.
That's right.
I think it'd be smart for us to help them know where they can look to find it.
Absolutely. Very good point taken there. Any other discussion?
I think the other point that should be emphasized is that our mill levy has gone down a little bit. I think that's an important attribute.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the approval of the budget for 2013-14, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Motion carries 7-0. Move on to action R1. Dr. Hinson.
Annual adoption of our school term plan. We have to adopt a plan with a minimum of... We have to adopt a plan with a minimum of 1,116 hours, which we have in place officially. You have to adopt, and we have to notify the appropriate state agency of this decision.
So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Leavens. Second. Is there any discussion? All right, good. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Motion carries seven, zero. R2, Dr. Henson.
Thank you. What I am recommending to you tonight is a comprehensive audit of our policies, guidelines, handbooks, any other information we might disseminate about how we conduct business. We've been working with the Kansas Association of School Boards. This is something that they have in place for the member districts. It is not free. We'll talk about that. But what KSAB and their legal team will do, again, Kansas Association of School Boards, is a comprehensive audit, which will take up to nine months potentially, of our school board policies, our administrative guidelines, our employee handbooks, our student handbooks, and any other procedures we have in place that might need to align, not only with statute, but also with court cases that, that we have in place. And so what they will do is take all of our information. They're going to review all of it to make sure everything's appropriately in place, that it's documented, that it aligns with each other, and that we're in alignment with statute and other things that might occur, EEOC, OCR findings, those types of things. So it'll take up to nine months. They will potentially visit with the board president, or maybe all of you as well, about some of the things that might be specific to the Shawnee Mission School District. And so, again, this is an audit by the Kansas Association of School Boards, their legal team. The cost to us is at a price of $18,000, and that could include some travel expenditures. I would anticipate that that would be minimal, but that would be a comprehensive audit. At the end, we would have an audited school board policy manual, administrative guidelines, personnel handbooks, student handbooks, any other procedures or items that we have in place in that regard.
Would this clear up the fact that every year we're constantly updating policies and, and guidelines and bring everything up to, so the language is the same, the crossovers are cleaned up? We still would have to review them, but all of those things then would be...
It would bring it current, with the exception when the legislature passes new bills, other court decisions. But yes, it would, it would make it current to that date. We would still have annual review, however.
And you were meaning that the crossover would be between handbooks and policy?
That would all be aligned.
That all is aligned.
Because that's always been hard to...
Right, right. And I would just note, I believe this has not been done for at least 20 years. So this comprehensive outside eyes on our policies has not been done for a very long time. So I think this would be a positive thing for our, our policies.
Well, we may have some that are old.
Yes. So board policies as well?
Board policies, yes.
Right. Just wanted me to clarify that language. Yeah, that's right. I, I move in favor of higher, of this contract with KASB, the policy audit. Thank you. Second. Thank you, Mrs. Neighbors. Is there any further discussion? Very good. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We will get those policies updated. Very good. Move on to number three.
We have several first reading of board policy tonight. This policy, the acceptable use guidelines, it's EG, AEA, E. One item I would like to point out in that regard, there was a question asked. It states every 30 days, the mobile device will need periodic upgrades. Service and maintenance maintained for security reasons by the Information Services Department. What we ask for the 9,000 mobile devices that we have in the school district is that at least once every 30 days, they log on to our network so we can upload the, the appropriate updates to them. And so that was a question that was asked, but against the first reading of our acceptable use guidelines for technology that's the property of the Shawnee Mission School District.
Mrs. Leavens?
I would like to point out that mobile devices also refers to every, every movable laptops, not just, to me, it means a phone. So, so that means...
Laptop, iPad, all, all of those types of devices, absolutely.
Okay. Is there a motion for approval? First reading. Oh, first reading, sorry. We have a lot of first readings here tonight. Is there any questions on that? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to number four.
Also, the first reading of the acceptable use guidelines. This simply talks about what users will and won't do in that regard. For example, users shall all adhere to the following guidelines of acceptable use. And just one of the items, all use of the internet will be in support of educational activities. And there are a number of things that the user agrees, here's what we will and certainly will not do with this device that's the property of the school district.
And I note too in there that the Children's Internet Protection Act is also named in that, which is in addition to that. Any other questions about this or comments? Very good, that is a first reading. We will move on to item five.
Item five is to revise board policy KFB. This is in regard to the possession of firearms prohibited. Again, it's the first reading, you have that in front of you. I think there may be some questions in regard to this issue. Going to ask Mr. Tiedemann if he can give us an update on where we are legally here in the state, please.
Well, there has been quite extensive weapons legislation this year in the Kansas Legislature. The bill that most people are talking about is HB 2052, and it restricts what local governments can do and what they cannot do regarding prohibiting people with concealed carry into public buildings. However, there's an exception for school districts. They are defined out of municipalities. So you can still restrict, much the same way we do now, people who have concealed carry permit, except the law does say that they can have them within their motor vehicles, if the motor vehicle is secure. What we have here is language that is suggested by the KASB on this particular topic, essentially saying that if, if the district wishes to restrict the concealed carry permit holders to the highest degree permitted by law, then this is the language that you would want to pass. And this is essentially the most restrictive language that you can pass here at, at the district level. And this is, in fact, the language that the KASB does suggest. And so that's, that's what is being recommended to you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Only because I know in the past we have sometimes had weapons in a car, and, and the parent is obviously the owner of... Would we still be calling that a concealed carry? And it would be all right even if the student is the one who's brought it on the property? If the student has driven that car to school?
No, no, it's, it's only the permit holder, I think is your question. And I apologize, I'm having an awful hard time hearing people tonight, so... You are asking whether if the student was holding that, that gun and the parent had the permit?
Well, if the student drove the car to school not knowing it's there, but it's been there because it's the parent's...
Intent is not part of the issue in this particular case. That'd be a violation. Although there's, frankly, there's a different section for students, but...
And there's also a different section for employees. This is, this is listed under the public section of our board policies. There's another board policy as far as personnel authorizing personnel, if they do have concealed carries, to, they have to secure those weapons in a secure vehicle. And so this, this, this has another policy in the, in the personnel section and other policies in the student sections that address the same kind of topic, only different, different ways for each of those groups.
This is a blanket policy that really should cover all those people, but this is making sure primarily that those from the outside, non-students, non...
Employees.
Employees. Know and understand the rules, which is why the posting, which we already had, is still there.
Mrs. Leavens, did you have a question?
I do. Two things. One, I'd like to disvoice my extreme concern with having any firearms on district property whatsoever, understanding we may not have a choice in this matter. Number two, it's my understanding that, and I'm not a, I'm not very well versed in this, but it's my understanding that if there is a handgun that is issued to a concealed carry permit holder, and it is in a vehicle, that it must be unloaded, it must be in a separate container from the ammunition, that it may not be a loaded weapon.
I'm not sure about that.
I'm, I'm afraid I can't speak to that.
I, I mean, the reason, the intent of a concealed carry permit is that you have a loaded gun on your person, so I'm not sure that it would be in the car unloaded and...
I think you're talking about a criminal issue, actually. And that, you know, honestly, I didn't look to see, I didn't anticipate that particular question. But this is about, this particular policy is about when you may or may not possess a gun. I presume that if someone is breaking the law, criminal law, and not carrying it in conformance with concealed carry, then that's going to be a violation of a different statute. Maybe, maybe not a violation of this particular policy.
It says secured storage, and so I think maybe we would like a definition of what secured storage means. Does that mean that it is loaded or unloaded? I think maybe that's the question.
Doesn't say one way or the other.
That's why I'm asking...
Doesn't speak to that issue.
Maybe we could learn that.
Well, I guess, the question, I guess, would be if you have a desire as to what the policy ought to state, I suppose you could do that. Then we could try to include that in here. Maybe you'd ask me to go back and say, can we prohibit someone from having it loaded? Maybe. Can we require XYZ? I would go back to 2052 and say, okay, does 2052 allow us to do that? I can tell you the statutory language right now, and it's the statute, the policy that is, the statute is 75-7C10, and it basically says that you can prohibit, a private or a public employer can restrict through its personnel policies, anyone from carrying a handgun on your property, if it's posted, quote, "Except that no employer may prohibit possession of a handgun in a private means of conveyance, even if parked on the employee's, on the employer's premises." And so that's what this language is attempting to comply with. Whether this statute would permit you to go further, I have some serious question about whether you could go further than what this statute is telling you you could do. I know that this particular language was intended by the KASB, because they said so, to be the most restrictive language permitted. So I'm going to say that I think you're, if you go any further, you might very well be running afoul of the law in terms of what you may or may not prohibit.
But it does state it is a locked vehicle and it's out of plain sight. So that would be either in the trunk or somehow, you know, not in sight of anyone walking around the vehicle there. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Can I just... Yes. Mrs. Leavens, of course.
So are, so will we, will we pursue whether or not, what the definition of secure and locked, secured storage is?
I can bring you back whatever definition there is of that. There may not be any additional definition to that, but I can, I can bring that back to you, if there is one.
Well, I think if you, if you read it, it says it shall not apply to the secured storage of a handgun in a district employee's own locked vehicle. So it's a little different than what the first part says, because first part says, doesn't even refer to it in a secured lock. So what they're saying is you cannot require them, if they have a concealed carry, to formally have it in a secured storage area in their car. It just has to be out of plain sight. Because it says shall not apply to the secured storage.
It shall not apply, in other words, the prohibition shall not apply.
The prohibition.
The prohibition shall not apply to a gun in your own secured, I read that to mean locked, same thing, vehicle. So if you keep your...
But not in a box.
It doesn't, no, it doesn't say that.
No, it doesn't say that.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
It could be in a glove box.
It's my understanding there are prohibitions on how they can be conveyed, though, how they can be...
When you transport them, like on a plane or something, they have to be totally taken apart. Ammo cannot be in the gun. But when you have a concealed carry, you have to have the safety on. I mean, there are little ladies carrying them in their purses right now. They're called the pink ladies.
Right. Which I, my understanding is different than, again, stored in a vehicle. There are different prohibitions on how they may be stored in a vehicle.
I don't think in...
Don't think so.
I don't think with the, that up, and it's not just...
So Mr. Tiedemann, you'll research that for us and let us know what you can find out, if it's defined at all.
Sure.
And I'm not a concealed carry, just so that you know.
Well, very good. We'll approach this then the next, the next meeting. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item six.
numeral six is in relation to the Family Educational Rights Privacy Act. We call that FERPA, just some additional language and better defined information in regard to the release of student records. So that's defined there for you. This is not optional for us. This comes directly to us from the feds in relation to this act.
Any questions or comments?
I have one.
Yes, Mrs. Leavens.
I just, I, I noticed that in, under number five, A2, state, local, and federal educational authorities is stricken. And then I believe the following items deal with state and local officials, but not federal education authorities and just...
Yes. I, I, to be quite honest, I believe that's a defect we've had in this policy for some time. I was never quite satisfied with it, and when I saw that we were changing this policy, I suggested that we change that part because I felt that that prohibition was too broad to comply with FERPA. The real exception is not quite as broad as our policy made it appear. And so actually, that's my change to comply with, with FERPA. It's not just any state, local, or federal authority. It's, so I took that language from the federal regulation.
Thanks. Any other questions on that policy? Okay, we'll move on to number seven.
We have extensive compliance issues now in relation to bullying. And so you will see a number of items in relation to bullying plans. And so KBA is our bullying plan, the, the first reading. We have, we have several of these, so I won't pause too long on this one. But these are requirements now that we have in place.
Any other questions on that one? Okay, we'll move on to number eight.
Number eight, GBA, it's the equal employment opportunity and affirmative action, also in relation to discrimination, harassment, and bullying. So we're going to have employee to student, student to student, so a number of these. They're all about bullying, they're just going to refer to different situations.
Any questions on number eight? Move on to number nine.
Number nine is our discrimination, harassment, bullying complaint form on the first reading.
That would be the document that goes with that prior policy. Number 10.
Same thing. This is GBA R, it's the equal employment opportunity affirmative action. Same thing, we're just in different layers here.
Right. And I will note that in parentheses is discrimination, harassment, bullying. That will be the name of the policy, as it is a new policy, if that is indeed passed, instead of the equal employment opportunity and affirmative action. But for some reason, board docs wouldn't accept that change of, of name quite yet. So that's why that's in parentheses there. Any questions on number 10?
I'm, I might, if I, if I may. You'll notice that a lot of this language is the same as what we previously had for just student to student bullying. Because of recent legislation, all of the bullying laws now apply not only student to student, but also to parents in the, in parent bullying and personnel, personnel bullying of students. And so now we're, you're seeing a lot, the same language get moved across into both personnel and also policies applying to visitors, parents, et cetera. So we're kind of trying to make that work all the way through.
Mrs. Neighbors? Right. Mrs. Never?
I'm sorry, can we go back to seven for just a moment? I want to ask on, where it says harming a student or staff member, whether physically or mentally. I wonder if you need to include emotionally in there, which is different in some respects than mentally.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Never, I could not hear that question.
Back to number seven.
Going back to number seven, where it says harming a student or staff member, whether physically or mentally, could we include emotionally? Because there is some difference in the mental aspect versus the emotional.
Do we have anything?
Well, first of all, first of all, you are the board and you can set your own policy. And if it's important to include that, you may include it. I would say, and again, we're taking this language from what we have already. I would have put emotionally in with mentally. But, you know, you are the board, you get to set your own policy, and you can make it as strict or as detailed as you like, quite frankly.
Is there any thoughts on that?
This language comes from, where, directly out of a statute or from KASB?
This particular, the bullying plan, yes. This actually comes from the KASB. This bullying plan is verbatim the KASB recommended plan. And I believe that language is statutory language.
We'll confirm that for you and let you know whether it's statutory or not, whether we have an option.
The only, and the only reason I ask that is I'm on the Johnson County Middle Health Board, and we do look at things from the emotional side as well as the mental side. And there is a separation there in some instances. That's why I asked that question.
Okay. Is there basically a consensus to include emotional also within that verbiage?
Well, Mrs. Ehl, if we can go back, we'll confirm that with statute and see if that's even an option or not, if that is the specific language from statute.
Very good. Thank you. And I think we are on number 10. Was there any other questions for number 10? Moving on to number 11 then. JBA, Dr. Henson.
In 11, this is bullying in relation to student actions. And you'll notice on the first line, it does say the policy in relation to incidents involving parents. So again, we have a number of different categories, but this is the item in relation to student actions, which is 11 on your agenda.
I'm not sure I understand the last paragraph of that. It says, "The Board of Education shall adopt and implement a plan to address bullying." Isn't that what we've done in another policy?
Yes, correct.
Is this sort of redundant, or do we need to...
Well, they require us to adopt a plan, but then we have to adopt the plan. And so they're requiring us to have a policy that says we're going to adopt a plan.
So this is the Department of Redundancy Department?
Yes, it is. I believe that's what that's called.
They adopt a plan in order to...
Adopt a plan, yes.
Any other questions or comments on that policy? Okay, we'll move on to number 12. Dr. Henson.
This is the complaint form in regard to the same topic.
Number 13.
This involves incidents involving district employees. These are for student actions, but it also references district employees. So you'll notice as we go through here, we'll address one issue, but it'll say if it's a district employee issue, if it's a parental issue, here's where you go. And so again, the redundancy that we have in place.
Any questions or comments on that? Move on to number 14.
And this policy is intended for parent to student or staff actions.
Mrs. Mack, question?
Okay. I'm just, I looked at KBC-E, which is our next thing we're going to look at, which is the form that you fill out. I'm just, I'm curious about this because the last sentence of this proposed policy says, "As appropriate, reports to local law enforcement will be filed to report criminal bullying behaviors." So to me, that brings up the general question is, you're going to hate me when I ask you this, who decides whether it's bullying or not, and who decides when it becomes criminal?
The forms that we will eventually approve help us determine whether it's bullying or not. So the form has to be completed, which helps us define whether it's bullying or not. Because of our relationships with law enforcement and our other school resource officers, then they have to be engaged in that conversation to determine. We are not going to determine whether it's criminal or not as a school district, but we will work with law enforcement officials so they can determine whether it's criminal or not.
Got it. Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on number 14?
Not 14.
Okay. We will move on to number 15. Dr. Henson. See, I kind of talked about this already, but is there anything else you'd like to...
No, it's the complaint form in regard to this process.
Because of what you just said, do we need, I mean, it says signature of student or staff. Do we need, I mean, do we need a line for, I guess we don't. I guess if an SRO officer comes aboard, they will sign on as staff. Okay, got it.
Mrs. Levens?
I just noticed in some of the other forms that dealt with staff, we had building or position. And I'm wondering if we need building or position or grade, since this one is for students or staff.
Well, this form is intended for parent to student or staff actions.
Right.
Okay, so it's the parent, what building they're affiliated with, or what student and what grade that they're affiliated with.
This is for a complaint against a parent.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, we'll move on to number 16.
Are you ready?
Ready.
Okay, these procedures are intended for parent to student or staff actions. Does it make sense? So a parent to a student or staff actions. And again, it gives reference to if it's one of these other bullying classifications, here's where you find that specific policy. So if you can follow that rubric, okay.
Any other questions, comments?
So when the complaint would come to the administration, then the administration has to determine, okay, is this a complaint of a student to student, or a parent to student, or staff to student? Where does it fall in that classification, which impacts that policy and specific form to be utilized?
Very good. Okay, first reading on all of those. We will see those again at our next meeting. Thank you, Dr. Henson. And I think we have come all the way to comments from the board members. I'd open the floor up for anyone who has comments.
It was a great morning.
It was a wonderful, soggy, lovely morning.
Soggy, soggy morning, but the kids had bright smiles on their faces and were ready to go. And so were their parents.
Any other comments? Great. Well, it is the first day of school, so we wish all the parents, students, and staff much success for this coming school year, and our meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.